Good evening, the meeting will come to order. The time is 5:31 on Wednesday, September 22, 2021. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission, and I will now call the role. When you hear your name, please answer. Stacy Banks?
Present.
Cora Masters Berry? Cora Masters Berry?
Here.
Maggie Fitzpatrick? Maggie? She was there.
Present.
Quanise Floyd? Bless you. Rona Friedman?
Present.
Alma Gates? Natalie Hopkinson?
Present.
Did I hear Natalie?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you. Kimber Mckitty? Marianne Miller? Mariah Rooney?
Present.
Cece? Carla Sims?
Here.
Hector Torres?
Here.
Jose Alberto Dukelis?
Here.
Gretchen Warden?
Here.
Derek Younger?
Present.
And Reggie Van Lee. So, in my call to order, I neglected to use my gavel. We officially cut the water, thank you. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, DC Law 18-350, DC Official Code 2-571, and 2-580. The meeting is being conducted remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform and is being livestreamed using, I'm assuming livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nakachtank and Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this Arts Commission. The agenda for this meeting was previously circulated. Is there any objection to the agenda? Here are no objections, the agenda stands as adopted. Next is the approval of the August 16, 2021, meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Here are no corrections, the minutes stand as approved. So here, I'd like to just make some opening comments. A welcome, of course, to everyone, thank you, commissioners and staff and our public friends are here as well. I want to pause to say, we've made significant progress since our August meeting in prosecuting what I call our collective agenda for this committee to be a leader amongst state commissions across the nation. To remind you, our collective agenda has three pillars. The first is a recognition of our interdependence with the mayor's office, with the city council, amongst commissioners, with the staff and amongst the staff. And a lot of progress has been made already. We've been bringing the commission to the community through a platform for driving our message to the community and connecting with the community. Many of us were at the Kennedy Center on Saturday where there was a reception held with well over 100 guests from across the city, any number of genre and any number of geographies represented there, and this is in northwest of the city. This coming Saturday, the Arts All Night event is happening in Congress Heights, so we'll be going there and bringing the commission to the community in that way. And the Mayor's Arts Awards are happening on September 28, where I will actually present an award. And this is part of our nurturing our relationship with the mayor's office. So we're beginning to recognize and act on the interdependence that we have with many other communities. The second pillar is the strategic plan that is focused heavily on capacity building and sustainability. And while there are those who have expressed concern over our new funding model, I'm happy to say that the Maryland State Arts Council, in an article that was produced a few days ago, are adopting a new funding program very similar to ours. And to quote something in the article, they said, "It joins this trend delivering on its vision of ensuring that every person in Maryland has access to the transformative power of the arts." And those who've heard me speak have heard that same phrase. I'm not saying they plagiarized, but certainly great minds are thinking alike. And also, my understanding that the Pennsylvania Council on the Arts is following the same trend. So we are in line with what other forward-thinking people are doing, and I would like to say that we're leading the charts since we started it before some others. Today, we will vote on the recommendations from the Grants Committee and the Public Arts Committee, very much in line with this strategic plan. We have democratized our committee structure with what I describe as open enrollment for commissioners to get on committees of their liking and for those committees to come together and have the autonomy to elect their own chairs. I would like to thank and congratulate our chairs of the committees. Gretchen Warden continuing as the Grants Committee Chair. Maggie Fitzgerald becoming the Chair of Public Arts. Kimber Mckitty becoming the Chair of the Finance Committee. Quanise Floyd continuing as the Chair of the Idea Committee. Hector Torres becoming the Chair of the Arts Ed Committee. And Rona Friedman continuing as the Chair of the Bylaws Committee. We have a third pillar, which is implementing the recommendations from the Task Force on Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. Two meetings ago, Haran reported on some of our progress there. Things like our clean hands requirements can be met through payment plans. We've removed the requirement to submit a separate arrest and conviction statement, offering convenient times for staff to meet with working community members. We've created the Idea Committee, the new funding approach, which we have talked about and which we will vote on today, and the fact that we are now going to provide payments to panels. So of the 44 recommendations from that task force, we've already begun to implement some of those things, and others are in the hopper. So we have a lot of work to do, but we started out of the gate with great energy. So I want to thank everyone for that level of energy and excitement over our new approach. With that, we will go to public comments, and I think our first guest to speak is Jenny Billfield from Washington Performing Arts.
Hi. Thank you very much, and good evening, commissioners and staff members of the Commission on Arts and Humanities. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Of course, I'm here in my capacity as President and CEO of Washington Performing Arts, but in addition to this, I've served on past commission panels and have partnered with the Commission on various projects. My family and I are proud to live and work in Washington DC and to be part of this community. For every artist and organization in the city, the pandemic has been a gut punch for our field. Were it not for the support of our federal government, local government, and donors, our creative economy might have collapsed altogether. So I join with others in thanking you for your work and sensitivity during a most complex, traumatic, and urgent time in our collective history. I've closely followed the work of the Commission in the past several months, well, for many years, but have appreciated the meaningful discussions about the social and economic challenges facing our city's arts community. And at the same time, I appreciate that the Commission is planning carefully about how to equitably distribute public dollars. These conversations alongside the work of the Task Force on Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging are the right ones to be having. I understand that the Commission is developing new strategies for how to stabilize and support organizations, especially those that historically have not had access to wealth and capital to enhance their visions and build sustaining structures that have enabled their counterparts to grow. At the same time, over the years, the Commission and city government have been asked to address the wide fluctuations in funding for organizations that have long provided valued programs and have become crucial and indispensable to community partners, artists, teachers, patrons, and organizations. This is challenging, yet a critical process. So I appreciate this major endeavor, and I'd like to share a few thoughts about money, skill building, mentoring, the unifying power of the arts, and valuing demonstrated impact and longevity. So let's begin with money. Equitable access to funding through a competitive process is essential. I'm excited by the Commission's commitment to help build the capacity, structural, and financial stability of smaller organizations, and I sincerely hope that this will become a multi-year initiative. But let's not stop there. Money isn't enough for an early-stage organization to thrive, which brings me to knowledge transfer and mentoring. Please invest in skill building and mentoring to ensure that there's a transfer of knowledge within our community. To this end, I hope the Commission will mandate a structured, tailored set of supplemental resources and guidance that will enable these newly funded organizations to efficiently build and internalize the practices they need to be successful. From my own experience, I know that not every arts entrepreneur has access to the knowledge or mentoring that enables them to sustain their organization, to learn how to build a multi-year budget, to determine hiring needs, to build an effective board, to provide the extensive record-keeping and documentation for grants and funders. These are crucial skills, so please consider funding a short-term certified nonprofit accounting professional course, such as one that's offered by a local accounting firm. This will help ensure that the windfall of funding is empowering rather than paralyzing. In this way, the Commission's help could be further transformative. In addition, I believe that a mentoring program within our community would be extremely valuable. There are numerous organizations and leaders in Washington, including Washington Performing Arts, who have themselves benefited from peer mentoring early in their histories and who have paid it forward by doing the same for others. Please engage us as partners in your effort. We can offer our own learnings, experience, contacts, insights into structure and planning. As we lift all boats, help ensure all are watertight. We're strongest as a community when we value and use the knowledge that exists in every corner. I'd like to close with a perspective that comes with our mission and our founder's guiding principle. Our mission, we champion the arts as a unifying force, and our founder's guiding principle, everybody in, nobody out. In just the past few grant cycles, our commission grants have helped ensure equitable participation in the creation, planning, and execution of programs that have had a measurable impact upon our shared community. Throughout, we have brought our institutional experience and scope to the fore to make possible a range of partnerships, programs, and resources that have engaged audiences, provided income, and valuable tools for performers and teaching artists and arts workers, and added crucial resources for learners of all ages across all eight wards. Our Mars Arts DC has spotlighted over 150 artists and over 60 local partnerships. Over 40 teaching artists and ensembles provide instrumental arts education and global cultural learning that's tailored to the needs of 100 DCPS partner schools in all eight wards. Early in the pandemic, we were the first organization to pivot to virtual to sustain their work and income. And we are very excited about what the future holds. I could go on, but time is short, and I know an abundance of narrative and data about Washington Performing Arts is in your files and probably using up a lot of megabytes. So with gratitude for your support and time, I'd like to share a conversation that my husband and I had last week at the Kennedy Center with storyteller Vera Oye Yana. As we talked about the challenges she faced as an artist during the pandemic, she stated that the supporting grant she received from the Commission had been crucial in her ability to support her work and pay her artists. I promised her that I would convey her gratitude. I told her that I would be part of this public meeting, and so I add hers to mine. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Great, thank you very much, Jenny Billfield. Thank you, I appreciate that. Christopher Morgan from Dance Place?
Mr. Morgan? Yes, hello, thank you Chairman Van Lee, and hello commissioners, fellow colleagues, and DC Commission staff. It's really lovely to see you all this evening, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you. As a mid-sized organization in the intersection of so many different parts of our incredible and vibrant city, I have concerns that some of the changes that are imminent in the new grant funding model for the DC Commission on the Arts and Humanities will leave organizations such as Dance Place, which I represent here tonight as its Executive Artistic Director. By the wayside, several of our peers that are deemed large organizations, as well as Dance Place, peer organizations such as Gala Hispanic Theater, Step Africa, the Atlas Theater, are really these mid-sized organizations that have been doing excellent work for decades and serving Black, Brown, LGBTQIA+ communities here in our nation's capital with such incredible programming and depth of work, but without the capacity to grow to some of our larger peer institutions that these new funding changes are having drastic cuts for. Dance Place faces a roughly 60% cut in our funding this year, and thankfully, so thankfully, due to some of the relief funding from both our city government and the federal government, I think we'll still be able to weather this coming fiscal year in good strength. However, it has me very concerned about the future beyond this time, when our earned revenue is still not quite back to what it used to be and may take several years to recover. Earned revenue for us comes from a mix of ticket sales and tuition from our dance classes of various kinds for youth and adults. That's got a trajectory that none of us can quite see the recovery of yet at this point in the pandemic and the call to racial and social justice. I'm concerned that this change in funding, which represents about 5% of our annual budget, almost $200,000 in reductions, is going to result in less programming, less artists we serve, a smaller number of artists we serve, excuse me, and a staff reduction. All of these really come from a lack of information as well. Most of what I've learned about these changes have not come to a grantee such as Dance Place directly from the Commission. I've had to learn about them in the press. And so while I'm also coming here to just share some concerns about mid-sized organizations and how they fit into the new funding ecology, I also have to admit that I don't have a good understanding of that because there has not been transparent and direct communication about these funding changes directly to grantees. Dance Place has benefited from the DC Commission in the Arts and Humanities for decades, and I feel like as a key stakeholder that serves 25,000 district residents and visitors every year, it would have been helpful to know about this so we could plan appropriately. I also wonder what conversations happened about a phased plan to these types of reductions. It's difficult to imagine an organization receiving a 60% cut in one of its key funders, but perhaps a three-year phased cut of funding from 20% to 40% to 60% could have allowed us to better prepare for the future. So I just want to point these things out. As a really committed and passionate member of the DC Arts community, a grateful member of this incredible city that has the highest per capita arts funding, so grateful for that, but just really concerned about the future and how these changes happen so quickly and perhaps without the communication to grantees that would have helped us better prepare to weather these storms ahead. Thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
Reggie, are you on you?
Yes, you, Reggie.
Oh, I'm sorry. What I was saying was, thank you, Mr. Morgan, and we do hear you, know that we really do hear you. So I was saying, last, we have Sandra Fortune Green from Jones Haywood Dance School to speak. Is Ms. Green here?
I don't see her, Reggie.
Okay. Well, we'll thank you to both of our speakers, Jenny Billfield from Washington Performing Arts and Christopher Morgan from Dance Place. We will now go to our reports and updates and our director's report, Haran.
Thank you, Reggie. I just have two very quick notifications to share. The first is to just build on what you said about the Arts All Night events this weekend, beginning on Friday. It's an annual arts festival, as most of you know, it'll take place this year on Friday and Saturday, and this year is the 10th year of the festival. CAH has been a part of it since the beginning. It began as a small project, neighborhood project in Shaw Main Streets, and it was funded originally by a project's grant award by CAH. And as of this year, it has grown to encompass 16 locations across all eight wards of the city with over 100 local artists involved. I know folks on this commission have been a part of it for a long time, Gretchen Wharton, Commissioner Wharton being one of the main folks, but also I know that there's really good programming scheduled to take place this time around with Commissioner Barry. We'll say a few words about one of the activities at the Congress Heights location on Saturday evening. We continue to provide financial, major financial support through DSLBD for this. And for all interested, I'd just say that the website is dcartallnight.org if you would like to check it out. The staff, our staff will be tabling at five locations between Friday and Saturday, so there will be a presence of CAH out there, and I'm going to try and go to at least three or four of the events, and Reggie will be at one of them for an extended period of time at the Congress Heights location. The second thing I just would like to provide an update on is our progress with recruitment. The Public Affairs Coordinator position at this point has been posted, and they're accepting applications. The Senior Grants Officer position will also be posted this week. We're working with a recruitment firm, Poly Hire, and their website is poly, P-O-L-I, hire, H-I-R-E, one word, dot com. So all of the information and the application instructions are available there online, so hopefully we'll have some of those mission-critical positions filled soon. Thank you, that's all I have for now. Thank you, Reggie.
Great, thank you. I remember to unmute this time, thank you. Finance report, Cece, I know that you're on the line. Cece, are you with us?
She's on the phone, Reggie, I just submitted a request to unmute.
Oh, great.
Hello?
Hello, Cece, you there? Cece, are you there? Seems like we're having some technical difficulties, so Brian, perhaps you can step in?
All right. Can everyone hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, great, wonderful. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to take a quick second to acknowledge the contribution that Cece has made to this commission as treasurer over the two years that I've worked with her and her continued support. I really appreciate everything that you've done. I look forward to working with Kimber and Cece, as well as the rest of the Finance Committee in the months to come. As it pertains to the reports, so Patrick, can we go directly to the purchase order summary report, please, that is the Excel spreadsheet? And basically, I'm just giving an update on where we stand with the funding in terms of the actual grants. We have approximately 10 grants that need to be established. There are some modifications that are still going through the pipeline, but at this point it is pencils down, and meaning whatever makes it through between now and Monday will become purchase order. So we've encumbered over $28 million of the $31 million in the grants funding. Of the relief and recovery grants specifically, there were 266 that were authorized, and it looks as if only five will not make it due to compliance issues. Do I have any questions regarding that information that I just reported? The second report is just the overall budget report. As you know, we're entering into the year-end closing exercises, and so there will be a number of adjustments as well as payments. We have quite a bit of payments to be issued, roughly to the tune of maybe $3 million in grants, and so the staff here is working very hard to get the grantees to submit invoices. As it pertains to the ending balance for the year, again, that's still a work in progress. It's stating here that the available balance is 4.4. However, I don't foresee that much being available at the end of the year. Are there any questions?
Brian, did you, 4.4 what? I can't see that.
Okay, so that's 4.4 million.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions to Brian on the finance report? Anything else, Brian?
I think that's it for the most part, Reggie. We did have the budget kickoff meeting earlier today, citywide, so there'll be some updated information regarding forecasts and things of that nature coming out in the coming weeks, so we'll look forward to that information as it may have some impact on fiscal year '22's execution.
Good. Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the important, really important aspect of today's agenda, which is the grants, the Grant Committee. Gretchen Warden is Committee Chair, and David Markey, Deputy Director.
Thank you, Reggie. Hello, everyone. First of all, I wanted to tell you who the members of the Grants Committee are. They are Stacy Lee Banks, Cora Masters Berry, Quanise Floyd, Alma Gates, Mariah Hall Rooney, and Hector Torres. All of our members were present at the, what seemed like hours turned into days of meetings to review all of the grants, the whole grants process that we are going to talk about now, including all of the grants that we're going to present for actual voting right now. The recommendations that you're going to see were voted on unanimously by the entire Grants Committee. Something else I'd like to say just to preempt for any of you who are on the call and who might be interested in weighing in on our grants process, I want you to know that beginning this coming November, we are going to begin what I call the Grants Revamp, and we're going to start from scratch with grants. We are going to talk about its vision, how it applies to, and what it applies to at this time and place that we're in. We'll be looking at the entire process, the design, the grant types, the applications. We're going to be taking our task force recommendations, our panel comments, and any recommendations from anyone on this call to make our program a benchmark for all of the arts organizations. So if there's anyone out there who wants to send in recommendations, please send them in to David Markey or to me, Gretchen Warden, I'm gretchenwarden@msn.com. And we'll combine your suggestions and recommendations with those of the task force and with those of the other community people that we have.
Gretchen, if I may interrupt here, I want to punctuate that, to that point, I've taken copious notes, and of course, this is being recorded, so the comments from Jenny Billfield from Washington Performing Arts and from Christopher Morgan from Dance Place will go into this process as we rethink the grant process. So I want them to know that we heard them loudly and clearly, and that will all be input to the revamping of the grants process.
Wonderful, thank you, Reggie. Okay, David, let me look at our first slide.
Thanks, Gretchen. So we're not quite going in alphabetical order, so first up is the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program.
Okay.
I know Carrie took the lead on this, but she may have to slip out, but Kevin is on the call too, and so they may tag team, so I'm going to turn it over to Ben.
Okay, Kevin?
I'm here at the moment.
Oh, Carrie.
Kevin, I'm still here for now, but I'm glad you're here with me.
Kevin, I'm still here for now, but I'm glad you're here with me. So actually, Patrick, I think we can leave the fellowship grant funding recommendations. Thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us. So the fellowship program this year, I just want to highlight a couple of major points for us this evening. This year, we had 10 different cohorts, programmatic breakdowns that we have, including our brand new interdisciplinary cohort, as well as the second year of our Go, Go, Go cohort. We received the same number of applications as last year. And Patrick, if you want to scroll down just a bit, and a little bit more. And this is all just information, some of the breakdowns that we had. If you want to scroll down a bit further, you can really get into the meat of our recommendations this year. So what we are recommending this year is a total of 350 awards out of the 466 applicants, which represents about 75% of our total applicants to the cohort. This is a significant increase over last year. It is an 8% increase in funding over FY '21. We are also recommending to increase the top award from $10,000 to $12,500. And we will be increasing the bottom award, the lowest level award, from $4,000 to $5,000. And that will give us an average award increase of nearly $1,000 over FY '21. And there's our funding breakdown. So these are the percentiles that we used for breaking down where that award came from. So the top one, the 100%, skipped the top award and then we broke down by percentages from there.
Great, Carrie, go ahead.
So Patrick, I think we could scroll down a little bit further if there are any, this is all mostly what I have said already. So this is a total funding pool of 2.6 million, just over 2.6 million for all of our awards. I think we can go to the spreadsheet if anybody wants to look at that. All right. So this first page, this is a summary of our awards. You can get a total of how many we are funding per cohort and per panel. We also have representation breakdowns of a couple of different groups and our funding breakdown as well. And as we go further down, we will get into the cohorts themselves and the rankings.
Go ahead.
Patrick, I think you can scroll down some more.
Yeah, go ahead, please, Patrick. I know this is a lot for those of you who have not looked at this before, and it is a lot. But our team, I'm so proud of them and all the hard work they've done. They put so much work, so many hours into this, including nights.
Gretchen, I just wonder if any commissioners have any questions or anything? Otherwise, perhaps you could move to the resolution. You're muted.
I'm sorry. We did circulate a document to the commissioners asking if they had any questions upon reviewing this over the last few days and we did not receive any. So let me know if there are any last minute questions that might come up now. But as of an hour ago, I had not received any.
Because I'm not quite sure what scrolling through all these things achieves.
No, no one can see them. I'll be perfectly honest.
If we can brag on the amount of work that went into it. So thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Carrie, for the amount of work that went into this and the full team. But I think since we have distributed this to the commissioners before, we did ask for questions. We got very few back. There have to be still some lingering questions. I think we can move to the resolution.
Yeah, and can we go back to the very beginning, Patrick?
There's the resolution.
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion. Correct, Reggie? Is that how you, I want, I wanted to do it grant by grant?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Okay. So be it resolved that the commission adopt the funding recommendations for the FY 2022 Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program Grants as presented for an overall total funding amount of $2.685 million.
Do we need someone to second it?
Yes.
A second?
Do we do this by full vote? Do we go individually? What's the process? Do I just say all in favor, all opposed?
Individually.
Individually?
Normally, yes.
Okay, I was just asking the process. So Stacy? Cora? Cora? Maggie?
Yes.
Has Quanise arrived? Rona?
Yes.
Has Alma arrived?
Yes.
Good. Natalie?
This is Cora. Natalie's still in class. She'll be getting out pretty soon. Yes.
So your vote was yes, of course. Your vote was yes?
Yes.
Kimber? Mary Ann? Mariah?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So of the voting members, it was unanimous.
Quanise voted by chat.
I'm a yes too. Kimber's on. I don't know that you got that.
Oh, good. So Kimber and.
And Quanise.
Quanise.
I think Quanise as well. Good.
Yeah.
Anyone else we missed? Good, thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. Okay, next, David, next set of slides, please.
So next up is the Arts and Humanities Education Projects Grant and Allery is with us and she's guiding that process.
Great, and we're going to just talk about the grant funding recommendations.
Good evening, everyone. So the Arts and Humanities Education Project funds in-school projects, out-of-school time projects, and professional development projects for classroom educators. The response this year was still pretty strong. There's a lot of great programming still happening in schools. The recommendation this year is to fund 25 applicants out of the total applicants. And Patrick, if you want to scroll down a little bit? Thank you. So you'll see that the total recommendation for both in-school and out-of-school time projects, there were two panels, but the total recommendation for both panels is $460,000. For the first panel, for in-school projects, we want to, the recommendation is to fund 12 applicants and the other is for 13 applicants, again, total of 25.
Should he be scrolling down?
Continue, please.
Allery?
Yes.
Continue, please.
Yes, I think we can move on to the spreadsheet unless any one.
No, we're not. As Reggie pointed out before, people can't even see the spreadsheets. They really can't.
Oh, okay.
I just want to make sure that everything that you wanted to point out about this grant, because you are the grants manager, you pointed out in the discussion just now.
And again, since the commissioners have this information sent to them in advance, any questions, anyone had from the material you read on this particular grant? If not, I can, you can move to the resolution, Gretchen.
Thank you. Be it resolved that the commission adopt the funding recommendations for the FY 2022 Arts and Humanities Education Projects Grants Program as presented for an overall total funding of... Can you slide it up a little bit, please? Of $460,000. Thank you.
Good. So I'll take the vote again. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora? Cora?
I said yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Was Quanise able to vote again by chat?
Yes, I was able to fix my mic.
Oh, great, great, thanks. Rona?
Yes.
Is Alma with us?
Yes.
Oh, great. Natalie? Natalie's in class. Kimber?
Yes, for Kimber.
Great. Mary Ann? Mariah?
Yeah.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So of all voting members, it was unanimous again. Thank you again. Thank you, Allery, and thank you to that team. Gretchen?
Hey, David?
Hello. And so I, sorry, my orders got mixed up. Patrick, do you have field trips there?
Yeah, field trip experiences.
So that's me again. So the Field Trips Experience Grants supports the cost of field trip tickets, professional development opportunities for ed, classroom educators, and comprehensive workshops for the students attending the field trips. We made some changes this year to the Field Trip Experiences Grant. Also, just to remind everyone that this grant returned for FY '22. It took a break in FY '21. It was on hiatus. So the last time we did this grant was for FY '20. And so there was a slight decrease for applications, but again, organizations, there was a great response in terms of being excited about trying to figure out how to offer field trips to students. And we also changed the maximum award amount to $50,000, when in previous years, the maximum was 100,000. Patrick, if you want to scroll down a little bit? So there's a slight increase as well in the allocated budget amount because of that. And so if we fund all, the recommendation is to fund 15 of the applicants of this year's, which would be a total of 515,487. I think that's, yeah.
You scroll down a little bit more, please. Go ahead. Allery, the ranking and award justification?
Yeah, so I did a grouping of organizations based on rankings, raw scores, and a three-point range from the highest score. And so you would have noticed that in the Excel sheets, that there were different groupings in terms of the award amount.
Go ahead.
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
So again, we did get this in advance, but I have to ask the question. Any questions or concerns, any commissioner had in reading about this particular grant? Or can we move to Gretchen making the resolution? Gretchen?
Okay, I'm going to make the motion that, for the resolution, and then we need a second on that. Patrick, can you scroll up, please? Patrick, thank, whoops. Little bit more, please. Thank you. Okay. Be it resolved that the commission adopt the funding recommendations for the FY 2022 Field Trip Experiences Grants Programs as presented for an overall total funding amount of $515,487.
Second.
Great. I'll take the call, the role. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Has Natalie joined us yet? If not, Kimber?
Yes.
I know Mary Ann is not with us. Mariah?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Unanimous again. Next.
From the East of the River, Khalid, I believe Khalid is back with us.
Yep. Yes.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. So the East of the River Program supports arts and humanities organizations who live and have a headquarters in residence, I mean, Wars 7 and 8. There was, the greatest news about this year was that we started with a total of, so in past years, we had, I'm gonna back up for a second. In past years, we had all Wars be able to participate in East of the River. Last year and this year, we started only resident organizations in Wars 7 and 8 participating. So we had both, all Wars, we used to get between 55 to 60 applicants. And I'm proud to say, this year, with just Wars 7 and 8, who started the process of East of the River application, we had 55 applicants who started the grant process. So that's just a combination of the, all Wars that we used to have and 1 through 8. So that's the first part I wanted to say. That was really good. Patrick, can you scroll down? All right. So there was two recommendations here that was, we presented. One was up, cutting off at, we had a total of 36 applicants that made it across the finish line. One, the first recommendation was.
Excuse me, scroll up a bit, Pat. We're not able to see what Khalid's reading. He's back up. Keep going up some more, please. Go back. Okay, down to, there we go. Go ahead, Khalid, please. Thank you.
Okay. So the first recommendation would be cut off at 31 applicants out of the 36. And there was the formula, way that we used here, where we converted to percentages and award recommendations are determined by applying the percentage to the amount requested by each applicant. And there were minor adjustments made in that first recommendation. The second recommendation stops at 33 applicants out of 36. And that one, there are no adjustments at all. However, in all, in both scenarios, we made sure that no applicant got funded less than, I should say, in first scenario, no applicant got funded less than 70%. And the second recommendation, the bottom two, got funded at, I think it was 65%. So pretty much 70% was low there. The recommendation is for the, the second recommendation to fund 33 of the 36.
Thank you, Khalid. I think when everyone will probably realize after looking at a few of these is that the Grants Committee chose the second recommendation in almost all instances, which is to fund more, find, fund wider. Questions? Reggie, you ready for the resolution?
You can read the resolution.
Okay. Be it resolved that the commission adopt Recommendation B for the FY 2022 East of the River Grant Program as presented for an overall total funding amount of $875,272.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? Y'all gone. Kimber? Kimber? Mariah?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
An I'm a yes as well. Thank you.
Reggie?
Yes.
Kimber had a note up that said yes.
Oh, good. Thank you. I see yes for Kimber. Thank you. Thank you, Alma. Gretchen, next grant?
David?
So next up is General Operating Support, or GOS. And I apologize in advance, we have very low bandwidth in Navy Yard, so I cannot see the screens, so I am going to work from my own screen. And so this is a grant that is very, very familiar to you. And in August, the commission agreed to fund all 145 applicants. And they, you also agreed to determine budget cohort sizes and also band ranges for each of those budget cohorts. And we presented, actually, Patrick, if you can scroll down to just the first spreadsheet, so...
We're not gonna do the spreadsheet. We're just talking through this piece, David.
Sure. Okay, I just wanted to present a visual, but so, sure. So what we presented in August was that we would determine awards based on the variance between an organization's GOS award in FY 21, and how they scored, and how they scored this year in FY 22. And using a midpoint of a band range, we would determine their score. And there was a desire to go back and sort of nuance that, and to see how we could factor in rankings for this year. And so that is what I did. I went back and I converted the raw scores to percentages. And then, working from the top of the band, the possible, the maximum award for each cohort, and I created awards based on the percentage of that. So for example, if the top of an award was $80,000, and the top of the band range was $80,000, and somebody scored a percentage of 95, then they would receive 95% of that $80,000 maximum award. There were two adjustments that were made. One adjustment was to award the first place applicant in each cohort with the highest award amount for the cohort. And then also, because one of the goals of General Operating Support is to provide stability and not to have awards fluctuate drastically from one year to the next. And there were organizations towards the bottom of the cohort that fell out of the band range or below the band range. And so we brought them up to the bottom of the band range.
Okay, can we scroll up a little bit more, please?
And so all told, yep, so all told, with the nine cohorts, we would fund just under $16 million in General Operating Support.
Continue scrolling, please.
Go ahead. Patrick? No, now go back to the, the end of the, thank you. David, did you want to discuss the update?
So really, the proposal is to, you know, to, to fund based on the rankings for this year for each cohort, rather than using a year-to-year variance.
Right. And the decision was made that everyone in this particular cohort be funded. So we didn't have to discuss soft landing, so everyone within this, in this cohort gets funded. So where's the resolution? Can we scroll to the resolution? Okay, there is no resolution on here. I'm gonna make up my own resolution. Go back. Thank you. Be it resolved that the commission accept the findings for the GOS grant, and I'd like to take a vote on that.
Second.
Oh, you have to put the funding amount.
Yeah.
It disappeared.
But David?
Yep, the funding amount is, whoops, sorry. The funding amount is $15,786,469.
And so we'll just revise your, your resolution, Gretchen, to include the funding amount.
Right. Can you put that back up, please? And where's the exact funding amount? Everybody can see it, because I'm realizing that the typing here is not really good.
I think the total might be in the spreadsheet.
Never mind. Then let's, we just, it's too much, and people can't read it. Let's go back, please. Let's go back to the beginning.
Well, I think, Gretchen, you should just repeat the resolution, and David will give you the dollar amount again to...
Exactly. The resolution, of course, is that we accept the findings of the grant staff and the vote of the Grants Committee to fund GOS, General Operating Services funding in the amount of... Thank you.
Mariah, second.
Second.
Great. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Quanise? Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? Natalie's been saying yes on chat, so we'll wait for her next yes on that. Kimber?
Yes, I was able to get off mute this time.
Great, great. Mariah?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
An I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Next grant.
And next up is Projects, Events, and Festivals for Individuals, and Travis is gonna guide us with that.
Good morning, everybody. So this is Project Events and Festivals for Individuals. And this grant program description is the PEPF grant program offers support to individuals who execute projects and promote arts and humanities activities to diverse range of communities within the District of Columbia. The total award for this specific grant is $7,500. Applications were scored on a, were out of, scores out of 100 instead of, out of scores of 90, as they were last year, or the previous years. Do you mind scrolling just a bit, Patrick? There was a small increase in applications this year from 77 to 86. Two of those applications were deemed ineligible, giving us a total of 84 total applications. Within that 84, we were able to hold four total panels, scoring about 21 within each panel. Do you mind scrolling just a bit, Patrick? So there were two, two scenarios were submitted to the Grants Committee meeting, Recommendation A and a Recommendation B. Within Recommendation A, we aim to fund about 60% of applicants within each panel. Recommendation II, however, was still within budget, but within Recommendation B, we moved that 60% mark to about 70% mark. The difference being in Recommendation A, it funds a total of four East of the River applications, while Recommendation B isn't, as far as funding, it's still within budget, but doubles the amount of East of the River applicants, giving us a total of eight, and funding one new first-time grantee to the CAH. And here are the two funding recommendations, as far as the cutoff point. So again, Recommendation A looked to fund about 60% of applicants, while Recommendation B increased to about 70% of applicants. And within the Grants Committee, we voted to accept Recommendation B, with the primary focus being this new piece of the IDEA this year, and definitely being able to fund more programs, or more applicants, rather, who are east of the river.
Thank you so much, Travis. Questions?
Questions? If not, you can move with the resolution.
Thank you. Scroll up a teeny bit, Patrick. Thank you, thank you. Be it resolved that the commission adopt Recommendation B for FY 2022 Projects, Events, and Festivals for Individuals Grant Program as presented for an overall total funding amount of $393,050.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy? Stacy? Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Quanise? Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? Kimber?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
An I'm a yes. One last category for Grants Committee?
Yes, and that is Projects, Events, and Festivals for Organizations, and that is Robert.
Hello, everyone. Just to reduce a lot of the redundancy, because Project Events are Festivals for Individuals or Organizations, I'll talk more about the organization aspect of it. So the Project Events or Festivals Grant Program offers support to nonprofit organizations who execute projects that promote arts humanities activities to DC. The application is open to arts and humanities organizations and nonarts and humanities organizations, but do arts and humanities work? Organizations may apply for project support up to $15,000, and there's no match. The difference between last year and this year, as Travis said, we made the scores out of 100, and then also we included IDEA into the scoring criteria. For this year, there's a slight increase in applicants. We went from 50 last year to 61. Of the 61, two of them were ineligible, one from, being from Maryland, and then the other having a duplicate account. As I scroll down a little bit more, we'll see that we're recommending $474,642 for this year, and you'll see the breakdown as we get to the breakdown of each panel. With a slight increase, we were able to have three panels broken down to 18, 20, and 21. Of the 59 that went to panel, 22 were new applicants to CAH, and then 16 of the 59 were returning Project Events or Festivals grantees from FY 21. And for Commissioner Shiners, we had Commissioner Derek Younger and Commissioner Quanise Floyd. So as we go to the spreadsheet, so we can see the breakdown of everything...
We're not doing spreadsheets. We're just gonna continue here. We've got more to talk about on this slide.
All right. So similar to what Travis said about justification for his awards, it's pretty much the same with organizations. So raw scores were converted to percentages, and then the award recommendations are determined by the, by applying the percentage to the amount requested. The first-place person or organization would receive the full amount, and then everyone else would get a percentage of where they rank from that first applicant. So the band range of the award amount that one would receive is around 75 to 100%. And that's pretty much Project Events or Festivals.
Wonderful. Thank you, Robert. Questions? Are you ready for the resolution, Reggie?
Yes, please.
Okay, be it resolved that the commission, now go back, thank you, adopt the recommendations for the FY 2022 Projects, Events, and Festivals Organizations Grants Program as presented for an overall total funding amount of $474,642. Second.
Good. Stacy? Stacy? Cora?
Confidence from a bold new area.
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? Kimber?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
An I'm a yes.
I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me, but I'm a yes as well.
Great, thank you. That was Stacy, right? Did I miss LFT? Gretchen?
I think you missed Alma.
No.
No, you got it. Okay.
No, I'm talking about my grants. I have an LFT on my...
Liftoff.
Right.
Um, yes, we're, we're postponing discussion on liftoff until October, the October meeting.
Exactly. That's what the Grants Committee decided, because we, our grants manager wasn't able to be with us, and we had a lot more discussion of it, so we decided to postpone it.
So we will cover that in the October meeting?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Anything else from Grants Committee, Gretchen?
I think that's it. Thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you and to our committee. This is hard work and detailed work, and because that work was done so well, it facilitated us being able to get to these approvals so quickly. So thank you. Thank you very much. Maggie and Lauren, do you want to talk about public art?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Bonley. We have two proposals this evening for FY 22 Exhibition Grants and the FY PABC Grants. Before I turn to the team to present those grants, I just want to remind the commissioners of the newly configured Public Arts Commission members, and they are Reggie Van Lee, Alma Gates, Maggie Fitzpatrick, Natalie Hopkinson, Carla Sims, Jose Uncles, Gretchen Horton, and Derek Younger. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it over to Lauren, who will present the AEG Grants.
Thank you. Lauren? Lauren, are you with us?
We also have Alyssa on to present the PABC Grants. Perhaps if there's a technical problem, we could go to Alyssa.
Sure. Lauren, so I know she's here. Patrick, if you could scroll to PABC, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Alyssa Maru, the Public Art Director for the Commission, and the pleasure of receiving a, probably the, the most applications that we have received to date this year. So we're excited about our community engagement efforts to get free applications in. For, for PABC, as a reminder, this is works that are all in the, in the public realm and in the exterior, and they are available to individual experienced artists and to nonprofit organizations. And let's scroll down, Patrick, please. Great, thank you. Um so from from this year, we um have a recommendation of uh seven um uh applications to to award, uh two of them being individuals and five being organizations. Um the detail for the uh individuals is to for them to receive uh one hundred and ten thousand dollars eight hundred and twenty and to organizations would be hundred thousand and four and five dollars. Um I do want to highlight that that this year from last year, we have increased the maximum award for individuals from fifty to seventy five thousand dollars, so they can um maximize their efforts as and 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 those as well. Um uh so the total uh recommended request amount is six hundred fifteen thousand dollars and three hundred and twenty five dollars. Um and in fact, concludes the synopsis.
So and I if there are any questions, Chairman Ben Lee? If not, we can go to the resolution.
I think you can read the resolution, please.
Thank you. Um if you could pull it up a bit, Patrick, please, so I can see it on the screen. Resolves that the commission adopt the funding recommendations, actually, you can make it, yeah, for the F Y twenty twenty two public art building communities grants program as presented for an overall total funding amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars. And I'm requesting a second on that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Juanes?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? Kimber?
Yeah.
Mariah?
Yes.
C C?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Uh Chairman Ben Lee, I believe that we've restored connection to Lauren um who I must acknowledge as part of this work for leading the this process with the team, which has gone quite well. Um Lauren, would you like to present now the A E G grants?
Yes, thank you, and I do apologize. My computer decided to just turn off right when you were calling me, so. Um I'm pleased, I'm pleased to present the A E G for fiscal year twenty two, which is the curatorial grant program. And this provides support for development and the public presentation of visual art exhibitions by district resident curators to grant support and use of our gallery space as well as our virtual platform, which we were so excited to launch last year. Um we increased the amount of the award this year to thirty thousand dollars and we are recommending the funding of one um such exhibition uh in we will be back in the gallery this year. We're so excited unless something happens between now and February. But if not, we will also have it on the on the in our virtual platform as well. That concludes my presentation, Maggie.
Thank you very much, Lauren. And uh Patrick, if you would bring the resolution to the screen. Thank you. Perfect. Um resolve that the commission adopt the funding recommendation for F Y twenty twenty two art exhibition cu- cu- curatorial grant program as presented for a total funding amount of thirty thousand dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jose.
Thank you. Stacy? Cora?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Juanes?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Natalie? Kimber? I think that was a yes. Mariah?
Yes.
C C?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Hector?
Yes.
Jose? Jose?
Yes, yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I think that concludes all of our votes.
Yes.
Grants. Am I missing anything? Thank you. Thank you again to uh that committee for their hard work and thanks to everyone. The staff uh do a tremendous amount of work, detailed work, thoughtful work in getting us to this point. Commissioners who participated in the panels and or on committees, whether it's the grants committee or the public arts committee, thank you. And of course, to all the commissioners for being here and being present and being able to vote individually on these grants. There's nothing, in my opinion, more important than we do at this commission than these grants and giving this money and supporting these organizations. So this is why we are here. And so I really appreciate you dedicating the time and attention and energy to this. Thank you. Thanks to everyone. Uh with that, do we have any new business?
Just like to take the opportunity, although it's been mentioned at the top of the meeting, I know we have art all night, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it's like sixteen or seventeen activities across the city. And the weather's going to cooperate. Should be a good day or evening in the District of Columbia for the arts. I specifically want to speak to Congress Heights uh because there are not only going to be, as usual, a great turnout of artists and and performers and all kinds of great things, but we also are going to have a panel at four o'clock uh that the chairman is going to be on, and I am also going to be on it along with other creatives to discuss the um the uh accessibility of art funding to marginalized communities and how we can be more equitable and how we reach out and make things um easier for the creatives to apply and be an active part. After that panel, immediately after that panel is a reception being held on the rooftop of the Congress Heights Art and Culture uh building uh to welcome again our new the our new chair and the and the leadership and the new commission, so to speak. Uh there'll be people there from across the city, funders and and creatives to uh to come and speak and and uh be able to be acquainted with the new people that they haven't um that they haven't met before. And 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 it sort of plays off of what happened last Saturday. Uh I just got a copy of the uh the um R S V P list, the the attendees of the event on Saturday that we had at the Reach, and it was amazing. If you look at how they uh listed, it's such a cross section, such a diverse group of uh of attendees, both geographically, as Reggie has spoken before, but also in terms of genres and and uh and race and all. So that's an an uh an emphasis that we are really pushing. And I hope that on Saturday, whatever you're doing, you'll take the time to, you know, come and and be a part of what happens over uh and morning at the Congress Heights Art and Cultural Center at five o'clock. Uh because it's good to see people all over the city coming all the way from one end of the city to the other end of the city. So I I encourage you to to stop by. Uh people want to see you. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Gretchen and some of the staff who put together a brochure. I had called one day because one of the um coordinators uh and well, actually Monica Ray, who had been on the task force, said asked if we could do like a one pager so that the constituents or the the creative people that find out what grants are available, you know, what the deadlines are, et cetera, et cetera. And that I I shared that with Gretchen, and that really actually turned into a bifurcate, which is very nice, even though, you know, in a few months, we'll probably have to do another one because there's still, you know, this is a work in progress. And so I just want to thank you all for doing that. I don't know how many of you were at uh who how many of you at uh to at the Reach Saturday saw it. But it's a that's a nice document, and it get it simplifies things for people. So that's it. I just wanted to add that.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yes, if I may, I just want to also um remind everyone and and to celebrate Alma Thomas, you know, a giant in the Washington D C arts community, gave so so much to members of our community and and was instrumental for the growth of the D C art scene. And also to thank profusely um the the grant reviewers who give their 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 time uh as volunteers, and that takes an awful lot of people, an awful lot of time. So I'd like to extend uh on behalf of everyone, a thank you, which has already been done, but it is an important factor of work that we do.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Good. Well, that?
Reggie, may I may I jump in? This is Heran. I'm going to uh take my cue from uh from Cora and just do a small plug for the another event on Saturday that uh one of our commissioners, Natalie Hopkinson, is um putting together. It's a panel co- uh discussion. It's called the Color of Art: Combating Philanthropic Redlining Through Investments in Black Music, Storytelling, and Archives. It will take place at a gallery, uh Mahari Sukhar Gallery in Northwest. Um what uh sorry, northeast, fourteen oh two H Street, northeast. And uh Reggie will be presenting uh right before he goes over to the Congress Heights um event. This is part of our Traditional Arts D C project that that C A H is doing with Howard University with Natalie Hopkinson being the lead person there. So I just wanted to do a quick plug um if if folks are able to come out.
And what time is that, Heron?
It starts at two o'clock, yep, two o'clock, and it ends at four. There's also the option to follow this online. So we can send um the links out later this week.
And can I also add, and thank you for reminding me, Heron, on Tuesday, September twenty eighth, is the Mayor's Arts Awards. And that's going to be taking place at the Howard Theater, and the chairman, I think he's already mentioned, will be one of the presenters. And there're going to be some other surprises and some good stuff that's going to happen. So if you can't attend, you might want to also see it. Uh it'll be live streamed also.
Good. So it sounds like we're busy. This is good. This is good. We're not hiding our light under a bushel. So so thanks again. Thanks to everybody. Uh the next meeting of the commission will be held on October eighteenth, twenty twenty one at five thirty P M. And with my gavel in hand, this meeting is adjourned at six fifty three P M, an early arrival. So thanks, everyone.
Bye bye.
Take care. Bye bye. Good night. Thank you.
Night, everybody.